That is, are they hard billing?
I'm understanding, no Paula. It's uh, it's soft billing and they're getting what they can get. You know, they're not, they're not pressing people for, for payment. You know, because they want to be a little bit more lenient than uh, other, other agencies. Because it is, it is our people in the community.
I understand that, I understand that. But I mean, our, they've got to be getting some insurance payments.
They are.
317 that we're paying each run.
Well, they got, I think it was around 300 something thousand. And then we only paid like 42. Uh, Wemps Town 43, the county paid so much. You're talk, you're talking, when other counties smaller than Grant are getting a million dollar budget from their county officials, from, from the county. And, and that's a county close by that I called about. They're, they're losing money. You know, they're not, you know, we don't want EMS to pay for everything Dry Ridge has, has blown out. We don't want Critten, the city of Critten and taxpayers' money paying for everything that Dry Ridge. They're not. What we're, what we're contributing to is strictly going to EMS. You know, the workers, you know, the pay, you know. It takes a lot, it takes a lot. The vehicles, you know. You, and you got people, some people that don't pay, so. Uh, we'll get more information on that. Todd, I'll, I'll, you know, request that and, and we'll move on to the, the fire department contract. Has everyone had a chance to look at that? Has everyone on council had a chance to look at the fire department contract?
Yes, that's the only one that did not go up, correct mayor?
Excuse me?
That's the only, that's the only contractor agreement that did not go up in price?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I would like to say something and I'm just gonna throw it out there. I'm not asking for any um, anything to happen tonight. But I don't know if any, any of you all have been over to the fire department recently, but they are absolutely on top of each other over there. Um, their vehicles, some of their vehicles are having to leave outside. Um, they don't have any room since they've brought the um, uh, the ambulance service in there. They've made space for them and they, they just don't have any room. I think we're gonna have to look at sometime in the near future, expanding uh, their facilities over there. So just gonna put that out there.
Are they storing? Mayor, I'm sorry, are they storing anything? Maybe this is a question to ask Lee. Are they storing anything in the uh, buildings or those garages behind the fire department or beside it on the north, southwest side?
Yes, sir. The brown building that is behind the station next to the old salt barn holds um, spare tires for several of the vehicles. It holds the additional state right foam, uh, fire gear. We have to use specific fire gear washed for our hose and turnout gear. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, and some spare parts that we had to keep for the engines.
What is being stored in the salt dump?
I'm sorry, there were multiple persons talking at once, I didn't hear the question.
What is being stored in the salt dump right now? The salt building, whatever.
That is JD and the city's property and to be honest with you, I really do not know at this moment.
Lawn mowers and road signs, that, that sort of thing.
Is there any way we could give that building to the fire department? To give them more additional space where they could free up some of the bay work they got?
They had that building when I first moved here. The fire department or the ambulance, uh, ambulances were parked in there. And then at some point, um, they, I don't know what happened. Chief, you might could tell us, or I don't know. But I, I know that they used to use it.
It's just lawnmowers and road signs. Should be able to put those over the hills, shouldn't we?
Well, we need to still do an inventory one day soon of what we have and what we need to surplus.
All right Danny, I'm holding you to that. I need some help with that. Um, as far, as far as that land behind the, I can say behind the firehouse, that was bought with a grant through Park. And we have to be very careful when a grant was used to buy a park setting.
Right.
Of what we can do with that property.
No, I was just talking about giving them a salt dump building.
No, no, I was, I was just responding to Jennifer, I'm sorry.
Oh.
And I'll, I'll talk. Can take a look at how many trucks there are and, and how many, uh, with this size city, you think that we might need?
I think that definitely needs to be in our short-term plan.
I, I would like to see that ladder truck get underneath a roof sometime. It was in the parade and it looked good.
Yeah, and it, it sure did. Then we get a, then we could keep her.
Not that, there's another one, isn't there? The Mack truck that's maybe 1974? Is that right?
I'm not familiar.
You're talking about the International. That's the brush truck. That's the one that goes, does the grass fires.
How many, how many ladder trucks do we have?
One.
See if there needs to be any liquidation or, how, how many, I mean. We keep buying more fire trucks or we keep, uh.
Just I need everybody to, I need to, I need to remind everybody that the Critten and Volunteer Fire Department covers more than Critten and city limits. It covers uh, it covers a big area. And they are the ones that are actually here in the city or their equipment's here in the city 24 hours a day.
Uh, let's look at the EMS run versus the, and, and it might, it might be AMR comes back. We really just have to wait and see guys, uh, where we stand at with the ambulance service. And look into at that time to see if there could be something done as far as uh, storage. Uh, Lee, you wanna talk to me about that salt building? We talked about that before, if you needed it and at the time you didn't. Just get, just get with me, okay? Cause I don't see a problem with that.
Yes ma'am.
They wanna uh, make an agreement on the fire department contract or um, we, we can go ahead and, and uh, you guys have had time to look at that? You wanna go ahead and vote on that?
I don't think it's any different than it was last year. Um, I'm, I'm fine with it. Y'all wanna go ahead and vote on it?
I'm good with it.
I would just agree with it. Really look at uh, you know, supporting them because they, they really come proof for us in the community.
Yeah.
Let's have a motion for the contract to be approved?
I'll make that motion.
Before, before we do that, before we do that, Lee, I have one question. Is that, is that good, is that money good enough for you to do what you have to do? I mean, you all have, you partner with the coronavirus patients too and this and that. I mean, is that enough money?
We had agreed to that. I can answer that Danny. Lee and I met and we had a meeting on that and that's what he agreed to. I wouldn't, I wouldn't just put a, a number in there that I think it's what they're worth. That's something that he and I had agreed to do.
Oh, I didn't realize the dollar amount was in there. Uh, I thought the dollar amount was gonna be separate in the budget. So. I, I'm a little bit concerned, I will go ahead and say this since we're talking about the dollar amount. I am a little bit concerned that we uh, offered up more money for the uh, Sheriff's Department and not more money for the fire department. Eight thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know how you came up with that or.
Reason for the, the fire department was because we gave more last year to help out with uh, correctly from Rome, the apparatus. And so we kept it, you know, it was good enough then. And, and this year, he, he said that was fine. So that's, that's why I went with that number. Well, what, Lee? Well, what uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We got our first substantial increase last year. And when I met with the mayor, I asked her to keep it at 75,000. Now, based upon what is expected of us right now and with what we're trying to do, um, prior to the COVID-19 disaster that's gone on, then I feel that that number rolling for several years will have us adequately funded for what is requested of us. Is there things that we can change? Things that we can add? Definitely. But at this point in time, I think the contract as it sits is fair. It's just like anybody else within the allowance. You live within your allowance. You do what you can with the allow, money that you're given and you make it work. If the city requests from us or the county requests from us additional services or place additional expectations on us, then we will come back with an additional request for money. But if the contract is passed, we will make it work and we'll do it right and end up in the black.
Do you think that you're gonna be able to afford uh, the PPE that you've needed for the COVID?
That is running us tighter than what I expected. Uh, when we passed our budget, we were looking at $6,000 for the entire year for our medical supplies. We are past that and we have had to shift monies from other areas. Uh, such as replacing some hoes. We were gonna buy some additional air tanks this year to replace ones that are gonna go out. That is being placed on hold. We are looking at round two and round three of COVID that will be coming. And trying to get the supplies necessary to face that is putting a burden on us. But again, we will make it work.
Lee, can I step in on that? What about, what, City of Critten has already purchased that to be divided between all the cities and the county as far as PPE is concerned. You should have what, you know, what you need. We ordered $14,000 worth of supplies, I mean.
Yes ma'am, but again, when those, those supplies are purchased and they're distributed out by EMA. First, I wanna make everyone very much aware that Wes Whalen and EMA has been a big help for us. Uh, we have gotten quite a bit of stuff from him. However, we're running into the same problems that he is running into. And that's finding the supplies in adequate numbers. Not just to keep track with what our use is right now, but to stockpile in case we do have a hotspot down in, up in Grand County. Wes is doing um, he's helped us immensely. And with what the city has done with EMA, I do thank you very much. It is appreciated. But stuff like gloves, we have enough that will do us approximately two to three weeks if we start having heavy use. In 98.5s, we are about 25 to 30% of what my projected uh, needs are. We are short of gowns, uh, large gloves, hard to come by. And that's just because we are a low priority to medical supply EMA because we do not run an ambulance. So we have to take other methods to find the supply. But yes, what the mayor has done, what EMA has done, the city helping the county uh, has helped us greatly as well as the other small volunteer departments.
If I could make a suggestion, um, and this will take care of what I wanted to add to uh, the agenda. Uh, I'd like to see maybe the uh, city making a one-time payment or one-time donation, charity gift, whatever you wanna call it, of somewhere between 10 and 12,000 to offset the additional supplies, restocking calls from this uh, COVID-19. And they're saying that there could be three waves of this. One come back June, July, and then again in October, November. And supplies aren't gonna be any easier to get from now until January. Uh, I know the, the chief has used up a lot of money that's was earmarked to go somewhere else. And uh, having a hose blow out in a fire is not a good idea. Uh, I just think we need to kinda help them along in a time that we don't know what's gonna happen next month. We gotta be prepared.
All right, Lee?
Yes ma'am.
And I think that you do. You trust myself and the city council. We'll always be here for you. You know, we can always, uh, right now is, it's a, a state of emergency. We, we can make, make that happen if you need that, okay? So, you know, get with me and uh, we'll see where you're at. And, and we'll take care of that. Anything else on the fire department? We're in it together guys, we're in it right.
Um, Todd, did you make a motion?
You can't make a motion on a, on a charity. That has to be something that uh.
Well, let's just call it emergency funding.
Alex, can we do that?
We're talking about, we're talking about the fire department contract, so that's what we're talking about.
Right.
So, you wanna make a motion about changing the fire department contract?
Are you talking?
Yeah.
Talking to you, you were talking.
Uh, well, either bump it, bump up the contract by 10, $12,000, but then they're gonna get it in increments? Or do we make a one-time payment for emergency need? And let them go about the very hard prospect of finding all of the stuff that they need? Because they're only gonna be able to order in small amounts because they are a small rural department that does not have an ambulance.
I have a question. I have a question for everybody. Doesn't FEMA help with this kinda stuff?
Uh, may I, may I answer that Ms. Paula?
Yes, please.
All right. The FEMA declaration is basically going to be an after-event reimbursement. Uh, when the tornado hit, it was almost 18 months after the event was over and they had been in here for any money's return to Grand County. At this point, if I may, I am not very comfortable with having two years back-to-back that we have raised the contract. I was comfortable with the 75,000. But also, I do recognize what Councilman Robert is saying. The assistance in helping us purchase the PPE and to make up for the money worth having to move around uh, would be appreciated. But I do not want to see that put into the contract because I feel the contract at 75,000 right now for what is expected of us is very fair.
I agree.
If the city wants to look at what is going on with the COVID situation and then assist us with some COVID supplies, then I would like to see that as a one-time payment.
So I'm telling you, I don't know what the fuck you're doing.
It seems we could al- always do a budget amendment if the need presents itself to, to the chief. Because like the mayor and, and chief have got an agreement of wanna, wanna move forward uh, and approve that agreement. And know that we, we will do a budget amendment. We, I mean, we helped on Scott Airbox before. Uh, we could do that kinda thing again when we see the need for COVID.
The thing is folks is that I think you guys know that I am not a bit bashful about talking and about bringing forward the problem and asking for assistance. Um, so with that in mind, knowing that the city is willing to help us, I think that the contract as it sits right now is um, is fair for both sides.
Okay, we've heard from the chief, we've heard our comments. Let's vote on this, guys, come on. Now we got so much time tonight.
This is the first reading, right?
No, I need a motion, it's an agreement.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
I approve.
Danny, approved.
Todd?
Yes.
Erleene?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, sorry.
Let's move on to the Sheriff's Department contract. The only difference in that contract is around $8,000. Let's hear our comments on that.
Okay, on the top, Mayor and Alex might have to help me on this one. On the top, the second word, it talks about consolidation. Uh, Critten already consolidated with the Sheriff's Department back in 99 and 2000. So this really isn't a con, a consolidation. This is basically a contract for law enforcement services, right or wrong?
Correct.
So does, does it matter that the word consolidation's in there from 1999 to 2000?
Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a previous uh, agreement on that with uh, Mayor Hicks, Martha?
Yes, there was. I think we had just kinda hit around needing, knowing to, to see if we needed to redo that, to update it or not. I think that's why we put that in there, just touching base with Alex to see if we re, need to redo that interlocal agreement. Or does the one that we had in place all this time work? This is the same agreement, I think, from year 2000.
Because this thing doesn't say anything about what they're promising to do. This agreement.
Can I step in real quick? This is the sheriff.
Sure.
Okay, so the agree, the, the contract you're all talking about, that's with the city and the fiscal court, not the sheriff's office. I just wanna clear that up so that won't, that will not talk about anything other than the county will make sure law enforcement services are provided. We drafted and I think a couple of the council members drafted up kinda what they'd like to see us do. And I think you all somehow um, fit that into your agenda, whether it was by resolution or uh, I believe it was a resolution, but Alex.
It was, Sheriff, I have it in front of me.
Yep.
Now, is the $8,000 raise, is that inflation or is that?
That's inflation. If it would've been something substantial, I would think that would be a raise, but inflation, yeah, 8,000. And you can agree or disagree, that, that's up to council.
Well, I guess Alex can. Go ahead.
I got a lot to say about this. No offense, but I don't feel like they deserve an $8,000 increase. Inflation or not, I've had too many complaints, speeders not being ticketed. I mean, just too many complaints, sheriff's office not showing up. Are we really gonna give them an $8,000 raise? I mean, they're not doing what they need to do now.
I would like to see that the agreement, are, are we, are we voting tonight on this, uh, this contract? Even though this is just a consolidation wording or mayor? We trying to vote on a contract tonight?
This is just the agreement for the, a contract with, with the fiscal court or the law enforcement for Critten. It's not, it's not the money. It's not the, the $8,000 raise. Right now, it's just to have this agreement with the fiscal courts to consolidate. It's, it's not about the budget right now. We can decide that later.
I hate to bring this up again, we're, it's already consolidation. It was consolidated back in 99, 2000. We're just needing the contract law enforcement services. Which I guess is a resolution is what the sheriff is talking about when that is what we agree with, with the judge executive. But I don't, I don't like this consolidation. This, this is, this is, this is already happened 20 something years ago. So we need a resolution.
We could change that wording, if I'm not mistaken, Alex, to adopt. Can we do that instead of consolidate or?
Yeah, Danny, that's your concern, you're just worried about the semantics of the language of the.
Well, and also, and also it doesn't talk about what they're going, what, what we're getting for our dollar. And I would like to see before we agree on this contract, that we see what we're, what we're getting promised.
Resolution, still standing. Resolution that we had, the 253, 2019, that the, the law enforcement committee put together, that still is in place. Sheriff Maynes has agreed to that.
I'm gonna apologize, I'm gonna need to, I'm gonna need to look at, look at that again. Sheriff, can you, can I ask you a question Sheriff?
Go right ahead.
Okay, the North End unit, the North End unit from the Sheriff's Department just doesn't cover Critten. It covers south to Sherman, Mountain Zion, and also around Elliston?
It, it depends on how many units we have available on a shift. If we have three out or more, one of them's gonna primarily be assigned to the Critten area. Now, if there's an emergency call that is gonna require two units in Mount Zion, Sherman, yes, he's gonna back them up. If we're short-staffed for the day, yes, that Critten unit may be taking calls down 25 to the Sherman area. Um, but, but for the most part, on seconds and uh, also fir- first and second shift, for the most part, we've always got three out and are able to do the best we can with covering Critten. Now, to add to some of it, you know, Paula said something about maybe not showing up at calls. That's a dispatch issue. If we're dispatched to a call, we're going to go to it. If the unit's not responding to the call, we need to know about that so we can figure out why. Was it dispatched incorrectly? Was it dispatched as a phone call instead of someone needing to show up? And then also, as far as the speeding. When we do our best to address them and it, Waller here lately, um, because it's got a little more heated and, you know, people, well, maybe they didn't see us out there running radar, whatever the reason may be. At one point, I had three units up there running radar on Critten streets on second shift. Just because, I, if, you know, we got the manpower and they're saying they don't see us, let's go let them see us.
That's, I agree.
But I, I just, you know, me personally, I find it kind of offensive that, well, we're not getting what, you know, what we're paying for. If you've seen what it costs, and I believe I've shown this to you all, to do law enforcement, for the 292 and, and let's even bump it up to 300. For that money, you're only gonna get about three people. And you're gonna get way less than you're currently getting out of three people. Now, at the end of the day, yeah, we're gonna have to respond to emergency. Now, at the end of the day, yeah, we're going to have to respond to emergency calls there. But keep in mind, we're going to be shorthanded at that point if you all pull that money back.
I understand that, Brian, but I got residents coming to me threatening to go to the newspaper and everything else because Cretton's paying Grant County Sheriff's Office and they're not, they don't feel like they're doing their job.
Well, let me, let me say something in the sheriff's defense. If they only have a one, two, or three units out and there is a hot call somewhere else in the county, yes, they go. And, and he's absolutely right. When you call nine-one-one or you call four-two-eight-one-two-one-two, it's up to the dispatchers, dispatch whatever units available, whether that be a KSP or that be another sheriff's office. Now, that, um, sometimes it could be dispatched another unit from another agency and they might not be coming. But the dispatch won't tell you what unit's coming. They basically tell you, we have a unit en route. They won't tell you what unit that is most, most of the time.
Well, we have had this discussion before, as a matter of fact, I've had one with Brian, uh, with a issue I had here at my house. It's all in how you word your phone call. If you don't ask to speak to an officer, if the officer drives through and there's no problem, he's going to drive on. So you just gotta, you gotta say what you want to. If you want to talk to him, you're going to have to ask for that officer to respond to your address and talk to him.
And that's exactly right. A prime example I will give you is a prowler complaint. Let's say someone in the Harvester's calls in, hey, I think somebody's walking through the yards. Um, seen him walking through my neighbor's yard. If, if you're not standing there watching the entire time, you may not see that deputy or that trooper or whoever's dispatched drive through the area. If dispatch doesn't say, hey, you know, one-twenty barley circle wants you to stop and talk to them about this, they're the caller, then chances are the unit's not going to stop. He's just going to drive through the area looking for this person. And, and that goes with, with any type of attempt to locate call. Unless the caller wants contact made, dispatch isn't going to give that part of the information.
And Brian, while we're on this, uh, discussion, if we can get some increased, uh, police presence on second shift down on Eagle Creek for, uh, they have a speeding issue down on there too.
Yep, and, and I'll have to get with, uh, second shift, but I'm pretty sure that was one of the streets they was hitting the other day, um, a couple of days in a row.
Have you, have we used, uh, in Grant County and Cretton, have we used that from the Department of Public Safety? Use the highway safety, use one of those speed radar trailers before?
Um, I, we're, we haven't been able to find one local. Um, Boone County used to have one and they know, it is no longer in service. Uh, I'm going to get with Troy Dye with Highway Safety and see if they still have one around the state. But I, I haven't seen one for a while and most of the agencies I've talked to haven't used them. Um, I, I don't know what the reasoning is. It's cost and maintenance and upkeep on them. I'm not sure.
Oh, Brian, I'll volunteer my front yard if you can find one.
Yep, uh, we are in the process. I started this week, uh, actually on Monday trying to find one somewhere in the state.
Sheriff, I know you have to operate on the budget that, that the money that the, uh, the judge executive and the magistrates vote on for you all to have. And yes, we know officers are leaving, going to the promised land up north. But if we do have a contract with you, would this be something that you would go to the judge executive and go, we signed a contract with Cretton and they're painless, this much money, which is basically enough for three officers? If we only have enough because somebody called in sick or you're short-staffed because of people going to other department, would you think this would be something that the judge executive would be able to increase your salary and your budget to pay overtime? So that either county has good judge coverage or at least Cretton has coverage twenty-four hours, which we agreed to?
So, so that's what we did for a while. Uh, we ran through overtime pretty quickly. Uh, we've made some modifications and, and I think we're going to be better with this next budget coming up in July. And also the judge and the magistrates, um, have been very good to work with on this budget to help increase the salaries. Um, thi- this current fiscal court has done a lot for the sheriff's office to help increase numbers. Um, so kind of where we're at this go-round is in this upcoming budget, they inc- they, they're looking at increasing salaries, um, on the bu- budget they're working on to retain employees. And hopefully, if, if we can make that work and future budgets start building on that, adding employees, adding deputies. Uh, that's something that, that I'd love to work with the city on also. If, you know, this is the route you all want to keep going, let, let's work on increasing the numbers. But we have to increase budgets in order to do that. So just keep that in mind.
Maybe they could set you up a bonus program that if they stay there five years, they'll get X, ten years you get X? Give them some kind of incentive to stay?
Really, the only thing, um, there, there's some rules and regs on counties as far as bonuses and things like that go. So it's really got to be in the salary. But we're, we're working to fix that. I can assure you, in, in this current fiscal court, they're very much on board with, um, they, they understand there's a problem and a need.
Can we, uh, can we come back to this or if you guys aren't comfortable with, uh, voting on this agreement, we need to move along?
In the next council packet, Mayor, can we get, uh, can we see that two fifty-three, twenty nineteen included in our council packet?
Legally have time to do that before that goes into effect. Uh, do we have to do that ninety days out, Megan?
I was thinking it was ninety days out. I thought I put the resolution in the packet.
The one that the mayor delivered to me didn't have it in it. It just had the consolidation. It didn't have what, what was, what was going to happen. Call me, I'll come pick it up.
Okay.
So the same one from last year, Daddy, if you still have that?
Twenty fifty-three, twenty nineteen.
It should be on, uh, on the website now, shouldn't it? I think everything should be on the website now.
It should be in the code ordinance books.
Thank you, Megan.
But I, I can make you a copy of it, Megan, cause.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Brian, do you want to go ahead and give your report or, excuse me, Sheriff Maynes?
Uh, yeah, um, I've sent Megan, dispatch, um, has been very good to work with on this new system. Chris Mills, um, one of the dispatch supervisors, was able to get me a march.